How I call the word, Dune City Council has regular meeting of February 13th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. You get a roll call please?
Sir, we've got Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Councillor Tom Mellon.
Here.
The Councillor Doug Wells.
Here.
Councillor Alan Montgomery.
Here.
Councillor Susan Snow.
Here.
Absent an excuse, our Mayor Bob Forsyth and Councillor Robert Moore.
Do you all stand for flip and pitches? What's leading to this?
The United States of America. Mr. Trump, like Christian. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being of us.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Say it.
All those in favor who can have a say in that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Say it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous. Alright, announcements. City Hall will be closed Monday, February 18th in honor of President's Day. Uh, the city has been notified that charter spectrum will increase the broadcast TV surcharge from $9.95 per month to $11.99 per month affecting February 21, 2019. Charter has also changed some of the programming as well. Dune City is looking for volunteers to help out with the 7th Annual Dune City Triathlon and Duathlon. Volunteers are urged to register early so they have the best chance to get their first choice for their assigned location. And we have information sheets here, uh...
Actually, no, that's for later on in the agenda.
Okay.
But you can contact Rapunzel at Dune City Hall.
Okay.
For further information, and this was one more announcement, was that the City of Florence will be having a City Hall brand reopening on February 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
Alright, and here. We have listed the presentation by our city, by John Murphy, the chief.
Who is attending a conference in Portland and unable to come. He asked if we could put it off till March.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Good on the options.
I did, however, include in your packet the certificate of insurance.
Yes.
It's already covered. That, by the way, is all we ever get. There is no policy. So if someone would be kind enough to ask him if there is a way to get something in writing as to what is covered, basically what I get is call pre-loss, they'll tell you. And pre-loss has always said no. So... So I really don't know I'd like to have something in writing, you know?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Can we have any citizen input on items not discussed in public here?
I'll do it.
Well, there's another one already on, but I was gonna ask if you want to put your name now.
Yes, please.
Bonnie Rose Allen.
Oh, you want a chair? Needs and needs. First of all, I want to thank you very much for amending the language regarding citizen input. Uh, but tonight I want to speak to you from my position as chairman of the Planning Commission, which is we are very fortunate to have two open positions on the Planning Commission and two, as I view it, highly qualified individuals. But I wanted to ask you to consider, uh, when you're looking at the applications and any discussions you may have with the applicants, if you would point out the fact that the Planning Commission has two basic roles. One is quasi-judicial, which is ruling on things that neighbors have desired to accomplish, such as keeping bees, which may be a great idea to one person and anathema to their neighbors, or a lot line adjustment, which may be harmonious or contentious. Another thing we do is we work on legislative issues such as reviewing or revising the building rules, uh, the land use code for, um, Dune City. And all of these items have time constraints, and we always need a quorum to accomplish our work. We need, uh, basically once a month, so if we don't have a quorum, it really retards what we're trying to do. So if you could ask the applicants if they feel they could commit to attending 75% of the meetings over the course of a year, that we all travel, we all get sick, we all have company, but if we make that basic commitment, we find that the Planning Commission can't make the progress that we hope to.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie. And Colby?
Yes, sir. Let me correct this by saying I'm new to the city of, I've been here a couple of years, so what I'm about to say is we work based upon observation, and I'm no scientist. I'm fortunate enough to have a property that overlooks the lake and have a dock. And I noticed the first year we were up here that the winter, the lake level rose to the point where my dock's almost coming off the pylons. Uh, that year, the spring, the rains came, the water was clear, we had a good salmon run. Last two years, the lake level's been very, very low to the fact that it's damaged the dock. In fact, I'm gonna ask Jamie now, and I don't know the answer, did we just close the dock recently?
The dam closed today, yes.
Okay. You know, and businesses like, you know, I've seen Darlings and how they've grown, and the amount of people that have come in there, or their RVs and trailers, and the lake's really, and Westlake's trying to do the same thing, oh, you know, rehabitat what they've done over there. My point is, if there's any way that Dune City would have more input, I know there was a court decree, uh, settlement on raising and lowering the dam. I know I talked to Jamie the other day, and you had mentioned that, uh, the water master thought we were at, uh, five, seven feet.
Seven point nine, yeah.
And we were only at 6.9. The other thing I've noticed this year is, there was a log that came down parked in front of my house, uh, and then all of a sudden we had the blue-green algae bloom, and I had all this muck and stuff all around the house. And that log sat there all fall, winter long, and it wasn't until two days ago it finally picked up and left to go downriver. So the point is that we need to get some kind of control over this lake to where we can raise it, to where we need it, and then flush it out so it blows it out and we get the salmon back in here. If you who's just not one of the property owners, the businesses like Darlings and Westlake, so that's all I got to say on the matter.
Alright. Thank you very much. For your information, we had a meeting at 4 o'clock to talk about, uh, goal setting for next year. And we reviewed all of the stuff that we've done this year and what we're planning on doing next year. And that was, uh, one of the major concerns expressed by a number of people at that last meeting, to make sure that we're on track with maintaining our water levels the way that we want them to be trained. We have had meetings within the past month with our state senator, uh, Arnie Roblin, and with our state representative Cathy McKeown, and they are aware of these issues. Uh, Senator, our, uh, uh, state, uh, national, uh, senator, Berkeley stopped in, and we mentioned various city concerns to him. And so we've got the ears of most of the people, and Peter DeFazio, our state representative, is gonna be contacted and talked to also about our concerns in terms of what level of control do we have, and input that we have as a city over the lake levels as opposed to when IP used to own the, the mill.
Well, I've been on water testing, going out and testing lakes now for two years. And though I know I'm no scientist or anything, but somehow in the back of my mind, I just see it, it's, again, pure observation. The higher that water level was spring, the better we got through summer, less chance of blue-green algae. The last two years have been really, really low when the blue-green algae cropped up, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. We don't have a public hearing. New business. First one is to appoint Planning Commission applicants.
You have two applicants and two different term ending dates, so when, I ask that when you make your decision, that you assign a term ending date to each of the candidates.
Is there a process to do that?
It'd be by nomination. Our voting to a resolution, I mean, not resolution, a motion vote, like you put anything out.
Alright, so for Planning Commission, we have an applicant Gregory...
Bench.
Bench.
Bench? And we have an applicant, Jamie...
Gorder.
Gorder.
Mr. Bench was not able to attend this evening. Uh, Mrs. Gorder is here.
Say that again.
Mr. Bench was unable to attend this evening.
Okay.
Um, however, he's related to Councillor Snow. And Jamie Gorder is here tonight. She's also related to Councillor Wells, and according to, I just wanted to disclose that so everybody knows.
Okay. So can we get to ask you questions?
Yes.
Alright.
Want her to come forward?
Please.
Oh geez, I should have prepared.
Lucky me to.
I do, actually.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Has a preference been made by either applicant on what term they prefer?
They haven't been asked, but you might want to ask that question.
What is the term of a Planning Commission person now? Is it four years or two years or typically?
It's three years.
Three years? Okay, and this is an appointment, right?
Yes.
Right. So there's one term that ends in, uh, January of 2021 and one that ends in January of 2022?
Okay.
In your agenda?
Agenda, thank you.
Do you have a preference?
I'll take the shorter one. No, I don't have a preference at all.
But you'll take the shorter one.
Well, it's when I first walked in, um, Councillor Meyer said if you get here early, that means you leave early, so I thought, hmm.
You fell for that.
That's only one of the stupid things I really saw. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Um, I work on a very part-time basis with Jamie Gorder at the Florence Police Department. I recommend her highly. I find her that, I find that she's extremely, uh, business oriented, get-it-done, uh, type of person. I think she'd do great with that.
Okay.
For either term.
Any other comments, questions? Is someone gonna recommend that she get the shorter term?
Well, I gotta be around her, so I'm gonna recommend that she gets the shorter term.
Alright.
As a motion, I make that.
Okay.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Do you know what the motion is?
Uh, motion to appoint Jamie Gorder to the shorter term, which would be term ending 1/13/2021.
And would your motion also include then, uh, Gregory Mince be the other one?
That would be what it'd be.
Alright. So... All those in favor of appointing Jamie to the shorter of the two terms and, uh, and Gregory to the longer of the two terms signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard.
Well geez, that was easy, I thought you had like some really good questions. Oh, you'll get yours.
I like how you combined that, included vote and just went ahead.
Uh, next on the agenda is to appoint members of the Water Quality Committee, uh, determined in, uh, January of 2022. And it looks like we have... Two?
Three.
Three? And we're gonna appoint how many? All three?
All three.
This is really housekeeping. These volunteers have been doing the work, they just haven't been officially appointed.
Alright, well, unless officially appointed.
I make a motion to officially appoint the three volunteers to the Water Quality Commission.
Can we have their names on the record, please?
Uh, Gerald Curran, uh, Edward...
Copeland.
Copeland, and Scott Widdich.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask unanimously. Report on conservation with Megan Mismer regarding social media issue?
I attempted to contact Megan, who handles the social media...
Right.
For the City of Florence, and of course, they're in the middle of their big move, and so she's swamped right now. So I didn't get a chance to talk to her. However, that having been said, I did get a reminder in a publication, actually, from Elcock, that if we, if a city chooses to go down that road toward social media and using social media, we're required to keep all records for 10 years by state law. So, um, that brings forth its own problems in its own way, 'cause I had no clue how you save Facebook page.
Yeah. Well, it still might be worth hearing from her at some point if we could do that.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is sponsorships for the 7th Annual Triathlon and Duathlon.
I have sponsorship packets for each of you. I am asking that each of you attempt, and please do your best, to obtain three sponsorships. You already gave us one, so I'll give you one, and she didn't make enough copies, I don't have enough copies. Do you have some more copies here?
Is there a minimum investment?
Yeah, we have.
Yes. You'll see that the, the packet... The sponsorship levels start at 7,500, and these are the things you differ, the different things you get from it. The smallest one is a hundred dollars, and it's all the different things. Thank you. And I'm asking you all, please, to help. Linda has done this in the past, um, but I think we can do better if all of us pitch in and talk to our folks, because it really is a benefit for the entire area, businesses in the entire area. Um, especially if they serve beer, just saying. Triathlon runners love to drink beer. That's right, ARBA. Also, as mentioned earlier, we are looking for volunteers. It is not too soon to sign up, so...
Right. And if you've done it before, you know how much fun it is. And if you haven't done it, you aren't missing out on a fun experience. If you're not gonna be a runner and a swimmer and a biker, then, uh, come and enjoy the festivities and help us all out. It's a very fun opportunity. Next on the new business is what to do about reserved water rights. Hang on to that thing.
Uh, which isn't going to be an option. The state has indicated that when we come up, when our permit comes up for renewal in 2021, that their inclination is not to extend again. Um, they want to certify the first permit as soon as possible. And so the people who have, anybody who has not been able to prove beneficial use on the water rights that they have reserved, may stand a chance to lose them. Now, the problem that, there's a whole lot of problems associated with this, but one in particular for the city is that these people paid money to get a reservation. So we would need to talk about, well, do we reimburse them, if we reimburse them, how? Um, what are we gonna do? And so my thought is that this needs to be a special meeting, maybe even a town hall. Um, I'm not saying it has to be done, like, you know, tomorrow, but it isn't something I want to fall off the radar screen, because if it does, we may find ourselves in a panic situation in 2021.
So are these the three water rights that the city has with the state?
Right, these are the water rights that the city has with the state.
We have the right to grant water rights to people coming in.
Correct, and they, people recognize that they were going to subdivide the property, and perhaps it was already in their plans, perhaps it's already been done, but they haven't sold the properties yet, haven't put them on the market, and so therefore, no one has actually put the straw in the lake. And that's all they have to do is one time, is put the straw in the lake and deliver water to the land, give us the measurement, so we know how much water it was, so we can report it. And then they're, they're included, so they have to do that at least once. But where you have people that the ground is, is not even ready to do that, they're reluctant to spend the money to do that, and I, I get that, but I think we may have to do that, something like that. Or, if they're not gonna do it, what do we do? Do we reimburse them? Do we, you know, how do we handle that as a city?
Well, two options come to my mind. One is our next newsletter, that certainly should be a, an issue to be addressed in that, and I think a town hall meeting would be important and adequate advertising to make sure that people know how important it is, that they might, uh, if they don't use their water right, they might lose their water right. And, uh, other than air and food, water's right up there on my, top of my list.
I know.
That's gotta be a huge liability issue if someone buys a piece of property with the idea that they've got a water right with it, or they've paid for it, uh, the water right, um, and then all of a sudden the state says it's not certificated, and they've already bought the land, that would be a real issue of that.
Right, well, they didn't pay for the water right, they just paid for the right to use that water right. And so, yes, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Either way.
Because at the time, it was never contemplated that this would be an issue.
Yeah.
Back when they did this originally.
I definitely think having a town hall's a route to go.
Right, and I would also encourage us to get in touch with Arnie and Cathy, 'cause I'm assuming they have something on the roll with it.
Yeah. Well, I know Arnie will at least, and I know both of them will understand the issue.
Okay. Um, and I'd, you know, be willing to drive a sail a bit late with them.
Which we need to.
If we need to, if they would like to set something up.
I think maybe at least putting them on notice, um, with, in writing first.
You threaten them that I might be kinda got.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I'm gonna...
Okay.
We're gonna come see you. And we're pretty shallow. Alright, I will send letters first after everyone.
Alright, the next, uh, item is consideration of contract for public work, supervisor. You have that in your packet. And you also, each of the councillors have been, uh, given a copy of Richard Palmer's resume and, uh, all of his talents, skills, and abilities. So we need to, uh... Have a motion to pass this agreement for services.
How long has Richard been, uh, with us and doing what he's been doing for the city? How many years has that been now?
Uh, well, he was doing it as a volunteer during, when he was on the road commission.
Yeah.
And he's been with us now for three years.
Three years.
And I had to actually, he did not want the hourly rate put in there. He, he said that, "I'll just charge you the, the use for the equipment."
Right.
And that was fine, but our insurance company didn't like the idea, so we had to add the hourly. He doesn't actually bill me for the hourly, the only time I pay him hourly if it's a piece of equipment that he doesn't charge me for, like his chainsaw or, or something along those lines. Or Pam pushing the burner, so...
Well, uh, being here on, on city council before Richard came here and since he's been here, I could see, I think, anybody that, you know, been around has seen the difference in our road since we've been taking care of him the way he has been doing, so...
So are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Richard Palmer as our, uh, what's his title being?
Public Works Supervisor.
Public Works Supervisor.
Is there a rate of pay assigned to him, Jamie, then, if the insurance company required it?
Minimum wage. He gets paid minimum wage.
Minimum plus equipment or just minimum?
Yeah, minimum wage for him and the equipment, the, the hourly fee, which is actually less than most.
By $75 an hour under letter B, which is pretty cheap for anything diesel powered.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, I believe there was a motion made.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask unanimously. Um, the last item under new business is consideration of purchase of bucket truck for use in road maintenance.
What happens when Richard, you know, we have a requirement to have the trees trimmed up to 16 feet. And what happens, because we didn't have a bucket truck, Richard would take his back home, or his, his crane or whatever it is, he'd get in the bucket and, and would lift him up. OSHA's not real fond of that process, and we have an opportunity to purchase this bucket truck that has been gone through with mechanic and is running and is actually kinda cool because most of the time with a bucket truck, for those people who know, you have to keep it running to, to do it, well, it is set on a separate motor, so you can turn the out of the truck off, so you don't get hours on the truck and run it off that separate motor to take the, the lift up. And we have a chance to buy it for, it's $3,800. Wow.
Where would we store it?
Either at Richard's house or across the street, that, that's what that property was purchased with.
Okay, the insurance companies all found it and...
Yeah, I talked to John today when he called to say he wasn't gonna make the meeting tonight, yeah.
So there's no issue with high time or anything like that for, does he have to be trained for that?
I don't have.
To work off the ground? I've worked in the towers before, okay, and you have to be certified for...
Okay, and that's not in his resume already?
I was just now checking that, it's not, it's a very healthy resume, but no.
To be certified, alright.
I'm just, I'm wondering if that's a requirement for OSHA, or, um, I don't really care, but OSHA does.
Yeah. I will find out, thank you. Try to keep us out of trouble, that's the whole idea.
The lift part of the truck, Jamie, that's electrical?
Hydraulic.
It's hydraulic.
Usually hydraulic.
So it's, uh, it has its own engine?
It has a separate motor, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is a Honda motor, it's brand new, he just got it, it was donated by somebody.
Gee, man.
So we need a motion to approve this and then make sure that he's certified and qualified to use it.
I'll make the motion.
Say it.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question, where am I gonna take this out of budget?
Out of the street fund.
Street fund, okay.
'Cause that would be primarily you for making sure that the streets are...
Just wanted to...
Trees aren't coming into them.
Know for sure where it was coming.
Alright, good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ask unanimously. I saw you were hitting out. Is no executive session, no whole business, um, reports? I can report that I'm acting as mayor tonight because he's not here, and that's my report. Community center?
We had a little water malfunction, uh, drainage problem, and Richard and I took care of it, took us a couple hours, and it's fixed and working properly now.
And we have a new issue.
And we have a new issue.
Which I haven't had a chance to talk to you about, so see me out.
Okay, well, next one.
Get you to the end of class.
Yeah.
Water quality?
I don't have any test results yet, so you guys just went out, or did you go out? Did you not go out?
Uh, what, 10 days ago?
Okay, yeah.
So we'll have a teacher.
Public Works? Maintenance supervisors reporting.
I don't think he's got that. While I was gone in December... While I was gone in December, I guess there were a lot of problems, and I asked Rapunzel to cover for me, and she didn't have this job. I'm just really sorry that she had to be on the phone in the middle of the night trying to arrange all that stuff as trees went down. So thank you very much, above and beyond, and Richard too. Right now, we don't have anything going on, it's too wet. He's been checking on all the drainage, the projects that we've been doing, they all seem to be working great.
Like you tell you, the one on Huckleberry, when he, you know, rained hard yesterday, there wasn't a puddle anywhere. It was really doing well.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
And then Jamie, the city administrative report?
Well, like I had mentioned in goal setting, during 2018, 59 properties in Dune City sold, 11 of which were vacant lots. Of those 11 vacant lots, nine are in the process of having residents constructed, or have, they have actually been finalized. It triggers my gut instinct that I need to do kind of a, real quick, buildable lands inventory of Dune City, to see how we're coming along, to make sure that we're staying ahead of the curve on that.
Okay.
Additional meetings were held in January, which will continue through February and beyond, because we're going to have to go over the budget beginning in March. The Sustainable City Year program, the University of Oregon, is considering, continuing its efforts to design the vertical evacuation facility that relies upon passive energy sources. Three professors and a dozen of the master's students met me here at City Hall. We discussed what we were thinking. I mean, this is all just an idea at this point, because we don't even go and land, put it on. But, and went out to the proposed site, which would be Lot 700, that we gave to Lang County. Lang County is now especially according, not according to the commissioners, haven't run it by them yet, but their property guy said he thought that they would be very much interested in giving it back. So if they do, that gives us a place real close here, at the end of Foothills Drive, that, because the only inundation zone in a tsunami is Westlake, is, you know, down there by the lake. It would give them a quick and easy exit, get up that dune, and a place to stay for the two days, day and a half, or however long it takes, and be safe. And perhaps even, I mean, we're doing all kinds of things, and I can't wait to see the design, because we were talking about maybe putting lockers all around the inside, so that people who, that would be assigned to each of the homes in the Westlake area, they could put their own locks on there, they could put their own emergency stuff there, so they don't have to worry about grabbing their grab-and-go kit, they can just go straight there and escape. But anyway, that's, and this is all free, so I'm having a blast with it. I've got 12 to 15 master students and three professors from the university designing something for the city. I love it, it's great. We also have a separate group, that's a smaller group, that's working on developing a marketing plan specifically with regard to the tax question, trying to find out what people, why they voted the way they did, and if it was a communication problem, or if they, you know, if there's a reason that they voted against it. But whatever they come up with will also fit for any kind of marketing plan that we want to do, because we have some unique situations. We don't have our own newspaper, we don't have our own radio station, we don't have our own TV station. How do we communicate with our residents? So that's what they're working on. And then we're gearing up for the triathlon. So we need sponsors, and we need volunteers to play that weekend with us.
It's a fun time, thank you. Do we have anything for the good of the order?
I've got a couple things. Since our last meeting, in this meeting, we had an opportunity to meet with our state representative, state representative Caddy McKeown, and our state senator, Arnie Roblin. And that was a pretty well advertised that we were going to have that meeting here, and I think, I'm not sure, I think there was about 10 people there. It was a heck of an opportunity for citizens to be able to bend the ears of people that have the power to do stuff for us in this city. Then after that, we had a staff-only meeting with United States Senator Jeff Merkley. And, you know, again, having a United States Senator sitting in here and listening to our problems, I thought was a pretty big deal. And after that, then we had, we sent out the, what do you call it?
Surveys.
The surveys, and you guessed, when you sent out a couple hundred of those?
Yes.
And we got back nine responses. Of those nine responses, those are all important. We had a meeting earlier today. Those nine responses are very important, and those nine responses were looked at by us. And so when we make decisions, those nine people have a little more say, and what we feel, you know, needs to be done as a city, it's an opportunity that's being missed. Let's see if the new city, you throw out the septic issue, you throw out the marijuana issue, and it's hard to get in the door in here, you know. It's, you need to be involved all the time if you want the city to run smooth and have things that you want. That's my two cents.
Thank you, David.
I'd just like to thank the new volunteers, all the help we can get.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. I want to thank you all for coming. And do I have a motion for adjournment? Some of them?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have adjourned at 6:30 and 7:00.